Uh, we will make that recognition of our middle school STEM team for their participation in the student astronaut challenge at Kennedy Space Center. We will make that two point oh five number two underneath uh recognitions. Do I have a motion and a second that we? Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
Second by Ms. Carlton that we adopt the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Alright, so carried. And then we're going to move now to our workshop and Mr. Dial.
Thank you, Mr. Lundy. There's some issues we've been facing during this school year, especially since the time I've been here that has been brought to my attention, but also is brought up some concerns that I've got. And so I'd like to take this opportunity and let you see the problem that we're facing. And then I'm going to show you some ideas or some recommendations that we have that we're going to try to put in place the remainder of the year. It will probably be just like a Band-Aid, but then over the summer, we're going to take a concerned effort that not only will are we going to be working towards, you know, more towards changing behaviors than the punishment. We understand that the punishment goes along with it, but if you don't change the behaviors, it keeps returning over and over again. So we're going to look at vaping and we're going to look at student expulsions. Vaping background. If you look at Florida statutes five sixty-nine point three, section three, it talks about nicotine dispensing device. And that means any product that employs an electronic chemical or mechanical means to produce vapor or aerosol from a nicotine product. That is what kids are called vaping. If you look at Florida statute three eighty-six point two one two, smoking and vaping is prohibited near school property, and there is a penalty to it. In other words, this is against law. This is unlawful for any person under twenty-one years of age to smoke tobacco or vape in home or within one thousand feet of a real property comprised comprising a public or private elementary, middle, or secondary school between the hours of six AM and midnight. So not only bad for the health, it's actually breaking the law. Law enforcement officer may issue a citation in such form as prescribed by the county or municipality to any person violating this section. And that citation could go up to twenty-five dollars or up to fifty hours of community service. Move on, we talk, start talking about some changing of behaviors. I'll tell you about what a surrounding county west of us is doing. If any person issue a citation pursuant to this section, shall be deemed to be charged with a civil infraction punishable by a maximum civil penalty not exceeding twenty-five dollars or fifty hours of community service, or where available, successful completion of a school-approved anti-tobacco or anti-vaping alternative suspension. So this always comes up. You can't search my kid. Yes, we can. You look at Florida statute ten six point oh nine, duties of school principal relating to student discipline and safety. Any school principal or school employee designated by the principal, if she or he has reasonable suspicion that they illegally possess such substance or object is contained within the student's locker or other storage area, may search that locker or storage area, and it can come from please empty your pockets. Look at our student code of conduct that the district had on page nineteen, it addresses tobacco products. It says students may not use, possess, distribute, or sell tobacco products, or electronic smoking devices or products on school property. So no longer means law, but it is yes. Look at page twenty-three, it talks about student detention, search, and seizures. It says students may be temporarily detained and questioned about possible violation in school board rules. The principal or designee may search lockers, vehicles, or other storage areas which the pockets are considered storage areas upon reasonable suspicion that it prohibits or illegally possessed substance or object is contained within that area. So that's in our student code of conduct. If you look at the discipline grid on page thirty-nine, we're addressing grades six and eight. On page forty-nine, it addresses grades nine and twelve. And on page forty-eight, it does address alternatives school. It is considered a level three offense. So possession of tobacco matches lighters or electronic smoking product is a level three offense. So what does that mean? A level three discipline, it's found on page forty-nine of our student code of conduct. First offense is parent contact, five days suspension down. That's the first incident. Contact the parent, help the parent, what's. This happened, and then it's five days suspension. Second offense, parent contact and ten days suspension. Third offense is parent contact and it's immediate ten days suspension and recommendation to school board. Only thing that really concerns me is what are we doing to change the behavior?
That's a good one.
There was a order issued February twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one that came from the superintendent. He said, moving forward, all Taylor County School District students who are caught vaping or in possession of an electronic vaping device will be recommended for expulsion to the Taylor County School District discipline. So with that directive. As I became aware of the number of expulsion cases that we were having, so there is, but those were still going by this directive. Eliminate step one, step two, step three, it was automatically before the disciplinary committee's rule of expulsion, and they. So in January twenty-twenty-two, the district purchased and installed Haley, Halo anti-vaping centers for a cost of twenty-four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and were stalled in bathrooms and schools. But that was our first attempt at trying to get a handle on the vaping problem. Vape first, ours used in bathrooms, it's very sensitive, the alarm goes off, and it goes off to the principal's office or the dean's office. But the problem is to get to the bathroom while they're still in there.
Right.
So then you can see on the camera who came out, but then you've got to actually, they either got to admit to it, or you've got to find the vaping. So what brings us here? Taylor County Middle School, as of one twenty-eight twenty-two, when I started looking at this, Taylor County Middle School had processed forty-two vaping incidents by thirty-one different students, tolling two hundred and sixty-six days out of school. So that's thirty-one different students, forty-two incidents, so it means there were some repeat behaviors.
That's just this school time?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wow.
As of January. Taylor County High School, they've had twenty-four vaping incidents that they have caused. There have been recordings and referrals resulting in a hundred and twenty-five days out of school. Some of the referrals are repeated by the same students, so their time out of school was more than just a single event. And they're being very honest, we feel like we're only catching half of the incidents.
Hmm, that's true.
But I've had a huge increase in issues with facilities being plugged up, with devices being flushed down, the detectors have helped. So back early before the detectors, when they got through with them, they were flushing them down the commode, and we're having all kinds of issues with the water system, and we're plugging them up and that, so detectors have helped. And so the principals are appreciative of this. Alright, recommendation, what we're going to do about this? We've got one night week to school left, but for the remainder of the school year, we're going to give the student parent the alternative to suspension to complete the three and a half hour, three Florida Department of Health course on youth tobacco and vaping infractions. And I gave you a copy, you can extend your items to future students. As we started looking at this, Kristi Anderson, who's a part of the school safety, started doing some research, and we just found this, and in the meantime, I told Paul this, and I explained to him the situation and tried to get his input, what we can do. So he had told me about it, so we actually found it. And since we started looking into it, the middle school has been using it, and they've had several, several of the students who has gone in, taken the course, and got the certificate. So this is step one of us trying to determine how can we stop the behavior? Let them see what this is doing to their body, recommend this from the, you know, the medical side of it, not from, you know, our side of it, that you can't do it, you're not supposed to do it, you can't do it in school. Also, in the course of the conversation, the question of why are they doing that? And that's where our counselors are going to come in there, that they can actually, if the parents are allowed, it's time for them to make one. Let's find out, you know, is it peer pressure, is it trying to be cool? Why are they using those vapes, especially at the middle school? But we're looking to work in it that way. Now, we're going to do it, or we're going to put in place for the remainder of this school year, is that once the student has been caught, parent has been contacted, give them the opportunity instead of the suspension days of going right then to API or to ISS, they can sign up for the program online, and they can stay in the class, it takes like three and a half hours, and if they finish it there, we get certificate, then we can get it back. But if not completed, they have to sort out the days. So give them an option, we'll give them a choice, and hopefully, I don't know, I don't think a little parent would not rather have his kid sitting in OTI working on this instead of.
Are we keeping good data as far as when they do go through the course? And then.
They have the certificate, and it's.
But if they get.
On the program, it is documented.
But then if they, are we following up? What if they get caught again? But we need to know if this is successful or not.
Well, we will, because we pull up to see who.
Who's completed.
Signed up, being completed.
Right. But I would like to see that data at the end of next year.
End of the school time.
Or, yeah, well, this might not be, maybe by Christmas.
Mr. Dial, can I ask you a quick question before you proceed to the next slide? You got that you want them, it's recommended that they would complete the three and a half hour pre-course, but we used to have a partnership with the health department where, I know this was before COVID, what SWAT came in, and I know we also had some type of partnership at one time, I think it was before Danny. It might have been up on EU. Well, if someone got caught, they was referred to the health department, and there was a course or something they could do with them.
We talked about all that, and we don't feel like we've got time to try to get that going.
Okay.
So that's going to be part of our summer plan.
Okay, alright.
But we've got some other ideas we're looking at.
Okay, alright.
Parent identification, during the parent identification, if the parent chooses for their students to complete the health department course on tobacco and vaping, the student would go to a school suspension to register and begin the program. Alright, so for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, during the summer, we're going to be working with Big Ben Rural Health Network. They've got a program where they actually come into your school, and they will hold count on it, classes with those students. So now this becomes face-to-face, looking at a person and not having to go to the program.
So they'll be doing that actually the summer?
No.
Starting next year, beginning of school.
Hopefully, we're going to try to get it on. This is one of the things we're going to look at this summer.
Starting the, okay, it wouldn't start the summer.
Have a place for next year as we redo our discipline matrix, and to put these options in there so we can get it out to the parents, because it will be a surprise to them. And this part of the program will be for repeat offenders. Counseling, or if the course does not work, and they're caught again, then they'll actually go to this class, as that they will come in, and they'll be required to do that. Another one of the options we have. So that is our plans of now. Paul, we have a meeting on the day.
The feedback loop from Department of Health is really good. It'll say, hey, you're not finishing, you're not, here's your level. And I think that's also available to the administration. That group on this is the best of any that I saw.
It's good.
But also in the mental health plan that the district put together, there are sections that are supposed to be done in the school, and after our meeting with the principals last week, they've had a hard time of working them in during instruction time, so we are going, this summer, we're going to come up with a plan, a district plan to say, on this day, this month, we're going to be going through that mental health plan. And Carrie, that's done a lot of work, and she brought her, there are some segments of that plan which addresses vaping. Think a little bit about.
Yes, so inside of our mental health curriculum, we have a platform that we're using called BASE, and BASE is a social emotional learning platform where models are being able to actually use this platform in different. Students at different levels for evenized PBIS, but now we're using it as a platform for all of the students at our middle and high school for their mental health curriculum. There are twelve total modules, and one of those modules actually addresses this.
So this will be available to all of our high school students. Got to work it in a plan so teachers know that on this day, we're going to take one period at a day throughout the whole school, and we're going to modules.
Is this for middle and high school?
It's middle and high school and elementary.
Okay, I was about to say, it looked like we need to add elementary.
Any questions on vaping and wins? So we're going, did a superintendent privilege, and I've talked with our disciplinary committee, of our principals, is, or they get to the expulsions stage for the remainder of this year, they've got to go through this program, unless they just choose they're not going to.
I want to ask the question in regards to, I know we got on here that you said the first step was to meet with the parents, and the parent and the student, and give them the option of this course. But I guess my concern would be kind of like Bunny, is like, we have like with our other policy, where the kids have to go to this village, and they have to, you know, do those twelve weeks or six weeks or whatever. But I guess my concern is how we're making sure that the parents understand that, because it's typically like you say, the repeat kids. And I'm not singling them out, but again, you know, their actions are repeating. So how, how is it, are we going to ensure that the parents understand the severity of that, we don't want this on campus, and we don't want to keep having this issue with the student, so they will understand that we don't want it to interfere with.
That will be a conversation.
Their education.
That dean, principal, whoever makes contact with that parent. If the parent don't want the kid in there, I'm sorry, then he'll go home. We'll explain all.
Okay, okay, alright. And we will document that?
Probably so, I can't tell you. We don't have it all planned out yet.
Okay, alright.
We're working as hard as we can, trying to get through this school year and try to put a Band-Aid on it. At least we're going to let them know effort that we're aware of it, and we're not going to have.
I think that's a good, it's a good plan to start, you know, and I'm sure we'll have to modify it as they go along, but it's.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move into expulsions right quickly. Alright, year to date, if there's any expulsions, both reported to the district, around the district, out of age twenty-one, who moved to the school for the remainder of the school year. Only the six eighth student had the option to attend Taylor Accelerated School and leave the expulsion because only, because only sixth through eighth grade students were assigned there. And that was all a miscommunication. Because of the miscommunication, we were missing the opportunity, and Lewis expelled some of our high school students, giving them the opportunity to attend. Accelerated School or the alternative school, and completing their work online with our online programs that we have in the district that we spend, spent our money on. So it was thought that they could not attend. But we've gotten that straightened out because the high school chose not to put their nine, twelve students who were needing credit recovery there, and keep them at their school, but so the disciplinary committee felt they were not assigned there, and they could not go there, but they can go there and leave expulsion. So we have the space at TAS, we have the technology, we have the software and the programs to serve those students recommended for expulsion using our Apex Credit Recovery Program. Recommendation, for the remainder of the school year, the disciplinary committee have the option of offering the replacement at TAS utilizing Apex Program, or doing the Apex Program at home using district laptop. So if the parent wants them to, if they're sincere about and want them to continue their education, then they can choose that option, and they can choose the option that their kid actually does it inside Brickmore Building at TAS, or in some case, one parent says, I don't want my daughter back up there, she's got to learn she can't act like that, but I want her doing the program, I will be responsible for it, she's, can she do it? So that's our recommendation for remainder of the year. There again, during our summer planning session, we will revisit expulsion options based on the services that are available to serve those students educationally. Because when unfortunately, we's, it's over the remainder of the year, and they get no instruction, guess why?
It's not right.
They're coming back next year. And so they're going to be, you know, having more credit recovery. Alright, so next thing, this is a good conversation had with Paul, talking about controlling of emotions. Many of the referrals that come to our dean's office are a result of a student's loss of control of their emotions and making their own choice. You know, anger is an emotion, and we've got a lot of angry kids. So when we see a lot of just angry students, so we're going to ask, I spoke with our counselors about the issues, and if the school sees these students exhibit these characteristics, if they will refer them, they will speak with them. They will, we'll try to get the parents, you know, permission to move with them, but we will. If there's something that they can do to help them, our goal is to head off the problems that so many times leads to vaping, and it leads to expulsion. You know, let's be honest, it's hard growing up today.
Well, all emotions usually anger, and all that comes from a hurt somewhere. So that's a lashing out from a hurt. If we can get to the bottom of the hurt, we can get to the.
Alright, that's all for now.
Well, I want to say it, I appreciate you and the work you've done and what you've plans you have. This has been an issue, and of course, you and I have talked about it just a little bit, but I'm glad to see that we're surely, surely trying to do something because there's not anybody in this room tonight. I don't think that, you know, we know what we want, we want and desire the very best for our students, for our kids to get an education and to succeed. And, you know, it's tough when it comes to punishment and trying to figure out what penalty and so forth, but we need to give our kids the chance to redeem themselves and to get their education. So I appreciate you.
Changing behaviors.
You're changing behaviors, right.
And I would thank my staff.
Yes.
You know, they've given a lot of, good input. We've had two very good meetings where it was just district well staff, and then we brought in principals, and we sold them, they bought into it. So we've got a, you know, got a group that wants to change behaviors by the, helping the vapes and cut down on marks.
Thank you.
I agree. Mister Dial. I, I too, I would like to thank you for bringing us this information, because I think this was a concern the board had, that when we seen that we was really having a major issue with this, we didn't have data, but we wanted to see, you know, how we could properly address it. So I thank you for bringing us the data. I also would like to ask, has there been any discussion in regards to your plans for this summer, how we could engage the community more into this? Because I know when I've spoken with one of our school resource officers, the concern that has been with vaping is, you know, what does our county has in regards to the sale of, to the sale of these products, and what type of ordinance do we have as a community? Because I know for me, we can do what we can do here, you know, in regards to our schools and to protect our buildings, but I feel like this is more of a community concern as to how do we keep this out of the hands for our kids? Because of law says that they have to be a certain age to bind it, that how are these kids getting it? So I like how you had in here in regards to, it can't be within a certain distance of school, but I guess I would like to know, and I'm, I'm not asking, this is probably something I can do on my own, I guess I would like to know, like, is there any ordinance in regards to the sale of this in our community and the distribution of it? And how we could probably partner with the sheriff office or the police department to find out how we really can send a message to the community is, we can't keep affording to have this issue?
Thank you, because you reminded what I was going to say.
Okay.
The county west of us, they have the ordinance in their community that the school resource officers can write a civic citation, and that civic citation is fifty dollars.
Okay.
And if they take the same course we're doing, and they complete it, they can get their fifty dollars back. But if they don't, then that fifty dollars, that's, everything is on tape. We don't know. We've got to look and see what we think we can implement, what we think can work for our community and our kids. And will it be a miracle work? We can't promise you that. Look, we've got to make it happen.
Alright, thank you.
I think it's not just us, it's every district in the state, and the, it is an epidemic right now. And I've talked to parents who have kids in the sixth grade, and, and these are parents in other districts and in our districts. We just looked at middle schoolers who, and, and parent, the parents don't smoke, they don't have it in their house, they can't figure out how on earth their kids even got these vape pens. And, and they're getting them from other kids at school, maybe, who knows? But there is a way that they're getting these, and it's not just us, it's a statewide epidemic. And so I have been a victim of vape flushing. I've worked in the concession stand in the gym last fall, and you had to swim in the hallways because it was, the system was backed up, and there was two inches of water all in that concession stand area from the septic system. It wasn't fun. It wasn't fun, but vape pens kept popping up out. There were five before, before Mr. Anderson finally got the lines open where the kids had flushed them. So, um, I know that parents, it's not just us, it's parents are concerned too and they need help. And I just wonder if, when we're talking to our legislators and talking to them about ideas for things we need them to help us with, this is something that we need help with. We can't, if we could fix this or battle this, all these, all of our districts, and I've talked to board members from two other districts. I talked to one from, um, Swanee County this weekend about this very subject. And it's all over the state and we need help. We can't, it's something that's bigger than we are. And, and it's statewide. It's not unique to Taylor County. So if it ever in our legislative talks, if we can remember to bring that up, that whatever, when they start talking about laws next year and things that they need to do, we need help.
I think Paul's heading in the right direction. You've got to change the behavior and the behavior is natural, you tell, you tell a kid, you can't have this, what are they going to do? They want that. So that's what we've got, we've got to take this, that desire away to, to put it somewhere else.
The education piece of it.
Education.
It's kind of like the old saying about how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time.
I think that's the way, like with smoking, it just became taboo.
I can remember in high school, there was a smoking section.
There was. Because.
Well, I think if you take those.
Paul?
Go ahead.
I was going to shoot an anti-vaping, uh, thing for our schools last year and I went into a Leon County vape store because this guy has to tell me why he can't sell. Because I'm on it. When I left, I wanted to say, I want two of those and I want the blueberry flavor and I want you to adjust such a salesperson. He's just there to make money. He apparently was doing good.
And, and that's the thing, I think they're modeled to sell to kids. It's almost like a toy, a flavored, you know, toy or something. It's, it's not a health issue so much as it's, it's.
And some of the devices look like mascara, they look like lipstick. And so they are very, it's, it's definitely marketed to our youth. But like in Tallahassee, like Paul said, I know I've counted, I've been on, um, Tennessee side. And there's one every other store. I mean, it's like you look at a plaza and it's like at least two and one plaza. So I'm like, you know, normally, you know, Nike ain't going to probably build a store next door to Reebok.
Right.
But for you to have that many in one location, that mean you know you got the business.
Big business.
And it seemed like it's geared more to youth than it is to adults. And so that's why I was interested. I don't know what we have here. I know the last I checked, we had, I think more than one location. But just like somewhere in Leon County, it's, it's like every other store, every other building. So that's why, like Jeannie said, I definitely think it's something we need to speak with Representative Schoof. Of, you know, if it's something in regards to, we have all this education law, but it would be good to see that.
It would really help us a lot if they could put their brains together. I mean, they have resources that we don't have in this room. I mean, they have, you know, the highest brains in the state and if we could get them on it and get that power behind it.
And they customize the amount of nicotine you want to use. They customize this so that they can.
Well, we know, we know it's, uh, we know that certainly it's an issue, it's an issue in all of our schools and we're beginning to try to move to do something.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl, very much.
So thank you. We'll move, we'll move on with the agenda now, uh, to the approval of our last minutes. Alright, Ms. Mathis makes the motion. Ms. Carlton seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried, and this brings us down to two point oh five, uh, for our recognitions and Mr. Dahl.
Thank you, sir. We, this is National CTE Month. And our Skills USA students from Big Ben Technical College is here, Mr. Heath Pridgen. Is he still here?
He's here.
Would you come up, please? But we just want to take this opportunity to let you know that, you know, we are so excited and we're so proud of what's going on at, at Big Ben Technical College and we're, you know, we're just, just so excited how you represent our community and we're glad to have you with you today and I think you've got something for the board.
Alright. So I'm going to talk a little bit about skills. Um, a career in technology-based education will help students to be more than just an average student. Career and technology education can give students what's needed to succeed for life. Technical skills, academic skills and employability skills. In addition to career and technical education, helps students to see how their learning applies to the needs of their employers. Skills USA demonstrates its commitments to career and technical education in its mission statements, which is Skills USA empowers its members to become world-class workers, leaders and responsible American citizens. We improve the quality of our nation's future skilled workforce through the development of Skills USA framework. Skills that include personal workplace and technical skills grounded in academics. Our vision is to produce the most highly skilled workforce in the world, providing every member the opportunity for career success. And then we probably present this proclamation observing February twenty twenty-two as Career and Technical Education Month in the state of Florida.
And on behalf of the board, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We also have one copy, does anyone else would like some?
Sure, sure.
You have something else?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. Don't leave, board, we need a picture, please.
Thank, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Out here.
In trouble.
And Ms. Tilwell from the bin here that she has heard her back and watched her.
Thank, thank you, uh, thank you all for coming and doing that. Promoting this week.
That's exactly right.
Now, Mr. Wendy, we've got another important group I'd like to introduce today. Our STEM team, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering and Math from Taylor County Middle School. They went to the Kennedy Space Center to compete in a student astronaut challenge in a nationwide competition. Ms. Ambison sent me this and saying that we are all so proud, now you may be proud, but you're not as proud as we are sitting up here of this team and the hard work and the communication and their, and their problem-solving skills. Team captain Fisher Smith, is Fisher here with us? Come up, Fisher, please. Team member Alex Tetter. Alex. Team member Skylar Schlauder. Skylar. Team member Kalen Morgan. Team member Nolan Ammon. Team member Shayla Beasley. Team member Austin Woodruff. And of course, their sponsor and teacher, Ms. Jennifer Ammon. Throughout the competition, we had a second place in mailbox design, a second place in engineering challenge, a first place in the landing challenge and a third place in the space shuttle simulator. Together as a team, this group represented Taylor County wonderfully. They earned a second place overall in this national competition.
Paul, can I mention also, I appreciate the pictures that Jennifer shared. I just, I kept looking for them every day. For an update.
Yes.
And board, I'd like for you to come down. We feel honored to take a picture with this group.
And while you guys are coming down, I'm going to say, we just couldn't have done it without Ms. Casey Roberts and her support. Ron, I mean, if I had a computer issue while we were practicing, he was right there, ready to help us get it fixed. And these guys and their hard work, they worked weekends, they worked late nights and then the parents just willing to step up and get them to practice. And I couldn't be more proud of these guys.
Can the board go with you?
Come on, look at that film going in. That's, that looks like so much fun. I'd just like to go watch.
The parents are welcome to stay, but if I was you, I'd go home.
I know, right?
I know. People trying to get a hold of me. I got changed that.
Tell them I'm on a snooze break.
Let me see that, Paul. Let me see that, Paul.
You know how to turn the radio on? Don't throw that window down, overnight dispatch rates people. I don't know how to turn it off.
Okay. Alright, uh, it's time for us to move on and brings us up to our, uh, next item agenda or agenda item. Three point zero one, which is items of interest by the public. Uh, do we have anyone here this evening that would like to address the board at this time? Anyone? If not, we move forward. All the consent items were approved by the adoption of the agenda. And so we bring it down to twelve point thirteen, establishment of position is the action item. Uh, Ms. Pule, Director of Personnel is requesting to establish an early childhood education teacher position. Seven and a half hour, ten month position and it, this would be located at the Taylor County High School.
And this is a position for the program that we talked about.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Ms. Mathis makes the motion for approval. Alright, Ms. Dunell seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Alright, so carried, and this brings us down to, uh, items of interest by the superintendent and board. And so, Mr. Dahl.
Okay. Alright, in your packet, you will find an email that was sent out by our Taylor County Primary School Principal, who also is heading overseas our BPK program. And it was, we have gotten our Florida kindergarten readiness screener scores back, better known as flickers. And it's an assessment required for all kindergarten students within the first thirty days of their first day in school. So it's not a reflection of what they've learned as a kindergarten. It's a reflection of how prepared they were by their pre-k teachers to be prepared for kindergarten. So the fall of twenty twenty-one kindergarten students, the statewide average was fifty. Our district average was fifty-two percent. That was their district. Taylor County Primary School was fifty-three percent. So we want to give congratulations to our kindergarten students and our pre-k teachers who did such a great job of preparing them from kindergarten. I know the kindergarten teachers really appreciate their hard work that they getting those kids prepared for kindergarten. So we're proud of that.
That moving from sixty point to, and, uh, up to twenty-eight is amazing.
It's awesome.
Exactly.
Out of sixty-seven counties, it moved up to twenty-eight. That's great.
So that's really a big shout to our BPK teachers. Okay, good news for our seniors. The State Board of Education at a meeting last week voted to approve to holding to Concordat scores at the same level as they were for last year. This year's seniors, they actually missed their sophomore opportunity of passing the Algebra I test because of COVID. And so after lots of appeal from the school districts to the Department of Education, the Department of Education saw the validity and, you know, our concerns and they took it to the State Board of Education. So they are holding that score in abeyance for this year. So that's good because we, we had several kids who were facing not graduating because of that's Concordat score being raised up. So they can either take the ACT or and use that as a Concordat score. So, um, the high school are working with those who still don't have the Concordat score, getting them prepared to take the, you know, the ACT twenty-nine in the school. So that was good news that they were given that opportunity. Alright, here's another good news. This came from Ms. McCoy, Principal of Taylor County High School. She sent it out. Says, just an update on the response from our meeting with the students about our ECE program, our Early Childhood Education program. We have thirty-three students who have expressed interest in the program and plan to have an, they plan to have an information night with their parents on the twenty-second of this month. At that point, they will share all the points and the expectations for the program. And so it looks like we're going to have a good opportunity to get that off the ground. We've got the job, the, um, job established and we've given, we'll advertise it and I've already had a couple of calls from interested people.
Yay.
Right.
That is wonderful.
Alright. Alright, next is rest. I put a bunch of spring sports scheduled in our high school. So if you're, uh, looking for some entertainment or a good time, you can go on the schedules and you can find the game on just about any given night with what we got. And so congratulations to our BBTC students for all their accomplishments and we appreciate them coming forth and presenting that.
Proclamation.
Yeah, proclamation, that's a good word, I couldn't remember. And also to our STEM students. And Mr. Wendy, that's all I got.
Okay, well, you've done a good job and have brought to us a lot of information this evening. We appreciate that. And thank you. Ms. Bald, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Dunell.
Yes, I want to thank our, um, BBC, BBTC students again. And I always love when they come and, um, they get up and they speak and that young man did such a great job. He handled himself so well tonight, um, both students. And, um, I just, um, I like to see that they have that organization down there to give them something to do outside of they, um, their coursework down there. Um, it's still building, you know, skills that they're going to need. Um, and congratulations to our STEM team. Um, I actually follow the astronaut page and I get so excited, like Bunny say, when the kids go down there. I would like to go myself because I know last year, I think, um, our team, um, I forgot what Jennifer said last year, but just to see our team was invited and commit, um, competing, you know, at a state level because a lot of high school teams, you know, don't get the invite or they don't make it. So that's always, um, an added plus to see not just our high school, but our middle school and this year we just had a middle school team. So congratulations to that and the middle school staff. Um, that's, you know, that's the teachers, that's everybody. Um, that's, you know, that's the teachers, that's everybody, you know, that put in the work to get those students to where they at. But it's extra hard work on the students. Um, and again, Mr. Dowd, I, I really want to thank you tonight for the presentation. I thank you that you not only brought us numbers, but you brought to us a current plan and a, you know, progression as to how this would go. But I really want to thank you for highlighting that your interest is not just disciplinary interest, it's to change behavior. Because again, as a board member, we have to make sure that our kids know our policies and our rules. But it's really to change behavior as how we see change and how we see progress. So I can't thank you enough for that tonight. And then I just want to, again, um, just thank the district, you know, for their hard work, you know. It's trying times, but again, every time I see something that's positive, you know, on our district page or just anyways that were highlighted in the newspaper, but just showing that we have a lot, way more going out, going on in our schools than what makes the newspaper sometimes. So it's always, you know, an added plus to see the hard work. I'm glad to see, um, I forgot your name, I knew it, but Eli, um, because I know your school, your class just got awarded its second perfect attendance for the school year. So, um, it's just any little thing like that, showing that, you know, what we have going on in our schools and seeing the hard work that we're doing, it's always an added plus. And then my last thing is, um, since our last board meeting, me, Bunny, and Brundo, we had opportunity to participate in our annual Dead of the Legislature. And the Capitol was busy, it was good being back in the Capitol since the pandemic. Um, we didn't get to meet with Representative Shaw, but we did have the opportunity to see him in committee as well as, you know, to partner with some other districts and, you know, expressing concern. And I enjoyed our visit, I enjoyed the time we had up there, and it was just like, um, it's always a good opportunity to be up there and know that we go before our legislators. Um, just that first day when we was doing some of the different workshops, I can't remember the guy name, but he was one of the lobbyists. And, um, he brought a education law book, and he showed us how much education law has, you know, grew in like just ten years. And so when you look at that, it just made me feel like, you know, I'm, I'm thankful for our legislators. But again, I just, I really would like to make sure that they understand what goes on in schools and what education is. Um, because a lot of the demands that put on education, you know, really prevents the reason why we here. We want policy, we want, you know, what we can to make sure we're doing, you know, accountability and performance. But the main goal is building good students that will replace us one day. So, um, Jason is always pleasant when we see him, but just to know, you know, that he's not just in office, but that he's representing Taylor County and he makes sure that Taylor County is on his mind and impart his efforts in that Capitol. So we didn't get the opportunity to meet directly with him, but that was just a good opportunity. And like I say, being with the other board members and being with the people throughout the state to know why we're here and what we do. So I just wanted to share that information to let you know that we was there and we had a good time.
Well, thank you. All right, Ms. Agner.
Everything that Deidre said, we, we did get to meet with, uh, Preston, which is his. And when you meet with other board members, just like when you meet with other superintendents, you learn everybody has their own special problems in their own district. Taylor County is blessed. We are a blessed district. It, it, and the book that she's talking about, it had grown from, from here to here in ten years with all the policy changes. And it's just sad that they keep adding and adding and adding and adding and adding and not take anything away. And we, we go and we beg for that, and we, but one thing that, um, Madison County did say to Preston was, "Don't dictate something to us that you're not going to, make it a mandate that you're not gonna fund." And we see that coming a lot of times. Um, we're hoping that, you know, we've had a lot of money thrown at us, but it's always dictated how you can spend it, where you can spend it. And, um, of course, you know, we're not in the same situation as our neighboring Jefferson County. So like I said, we're blessed, we are very blessed. We have good, uh, employees, we have good teachers, we have good administrators. Our students are getting very well educated. I couldn't fix it. But, um, and then another thing I wanted to bring up too is naturally recommend, uh, congratulate the, the, the science team and the STEM, the astronauts and the skill team. But I've noticed that our ROTC are going to do a mud, at the, uh, mud.
That looks like it's gonna be a lot of fun.
And I think that's a good thing for the community to be involved in. It sort of looks like it's gonna be a fun thing, and it's a way for, for vendors to go out and set up at the Iron Mud Ranch.
We need to get all our vaping kids that we catch to go out there and check the mud, right?
Yeah, and then they have, um, they're gonna have the competition, and then you can sponsor, uh, on the back of a T-shirt. So it'll, it'll be the first one ever, so if you want to get your name on the back of a T-shirt, good way to sponsor. And, and I'm sure they'll put those funds to good use. But that, anything we can do like that with our school and the community, I think it's a great thing. Um, really excited about our Big Ben Technical growing. Um, I understand that everything's, uh, going forward pretty quickly on getting the building built and so, um, but, and again, Paul, we thank you again for keeping us informed. I just, I'm a numbers person, I like to see the results are in the numbers. You can't hide them. If we can keep that, uh, spreadsheet going so that we can see what does work and what doesn't work. We are great about throwing things out here, and then we never see, well, whatever happened to that? Or where, where did that get us? So we've got to measure, and I think that you're heading in the right direction.
Got to look for a return on your investment.
Yes, 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 but other than that, I'm good.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mathis.
I was thinking about, and Bonnie said the education law, but went from here to here. And this is what the scary thing is. The United States, by anyone's standards, has the best educational system in the world, in the world. And it's a fact. Look, no matter what they say about us, we're the, we're the best, according to, I mean, US News Today and all those Education Weekly people. And within that system, Florida is ranked number three. So in the best educational system in the world, within the United States, we're ranked number three. And if you go and sit and listen to them talk about us on the, um, Senate floor or the House floor, you would think that we were the bottom of the barrel in the world. And when they grow that book, when they make those changes, everything they do is mandates what we do, right down to our teachers in the classroom, their breaks, their recesses, what they teach, what they say. It affects us.
Well, they, they have to earn their money, and that's what they do.
And they, and so the thing is, they're trying to fix something that's not broken in a lot of ways, because we're in the top, in the best. Florida is, I mean, I guess we could be number one, we could, that's always something we could aspire to be, but we are three. So it just really scares me every time they make laws. I just wonder, are we gonna go up or down from this? How this is gonna shake up the way we stand in the, in that education system in, in the United States and in the world? And I just hope they think about that, like our kids are, may, are, do have a lot of opportunities that, that they don't have in a lot of other states. We do have NASA, the kids that were just in here. I mean, if, if they would sit in those rooms when they're thinking up laws and think up ways to grow our science programs and give us better STEM engagement and think about legislative changes that they could make that would make these areas better about the vaping pandemic, to me, to me, we would be in a lot better shape than we are with them worrying about what our, if our curriculum is being properly, um, looked over before it's approved. So anyway, that's one of the things that's on there. But also, um, I, on this, on this page, these personnel recommendations, I was thinking when I was looking at it, because seventeen years ago, um, I was sitting at my dining table with a young lady that had just graduated from high school. I'd known her since she was born. She had a, a degenerative disease, birth defect in her eyes, it was called toxoplasmosis. They expected her to be blind by the time she graduated from high school. And as science progressed, as she grew, and thankfully, she didn't go blind, she did lose a great deal of her vision, but she wears contacts and now, and most of that's corrected. That girl that I sat at my dining table with and helped her fill out her Pell Grant paperwork, like I did it. We gathered all the information up and we applied to colleges together. She was graduating from high school. She had been held back a year in school because of her, um, her eye problems. But today, that girl is number nine on our personnel recommendations and, um, an instructional appointment from Maria Reed to teacher position. So, uh, she's been with us a long time. She was a pre-K teacher before that, and I just wanna, if she hears this, I just want, y'all all know how very, very proud I am of that young lady tonight. And, um, also, I want to thank Mr. Dowd for keeping us up to date, what everybody else said, because that is just wonderful to know that you are putting the numbers together and getting them to us and letting us know the repercussions of, you know, some of the things we've done and how they've trickled down to what you feel like are expulsions that we could save and get more classroom time back from. I appreciate that and the, um, vaping. And, um, let me see if I had any other notes before I hush. I'm done.
Okay, all right, well, good, Ms. Mathis.
Listen to him, he don't, he's like.
Ms. Carlton.
Okay, I could rehash everything now. Uh, I just want to thanks to all our staff, uh, within the whole school district, because it takes everyone. It's not just a, a one-person job, it, it does take everyone.
Amen.
And, uh, I do appreciate them. The day in the legislature was good. I mean, you, we, we, we hear a lot, the committee meetings, to see them going back and forth, that's, uh, that's, that's, that's just the way it works. And, uh, I, I do appreciate the opportunity of us being able to go up there. The recognition for Skills USA and for the STEM students, I just think that's what it's all about. That's another thing that we need to be celebrating, those, those, uh, students. And I do appreciate the presentation for the workshop and all, because tonight, because that's what we need to be working on.
Yeah.
And the more that we can do things like that, uh, and to, to try to put some, uh, I guess some thrust or the backbone into some of those programs, that we, we just have to do it. So with that, that's all I have to say.
Oh, Dana, I forgot, we did have, I forgot to, um, acknowledge Senator Ozley. We did have an appointment with her, and I was able to go over. And again, I want to thank her for everything she does in regards to Taylor County.
Okay, thank you. Do we need executive session or anything this evening? Okay, all right. Well, I can concur with all the, what the board has said, uh, this evening, and certainly, uh, just excites us or makes us feel good and, and proud when we see, uh, our young people step up and, and, um, show their talent, their ability, uh, but that just didn't happen. It comes from home and parents, it comes from, uh, the instruction from the schools, leadership. And so I want to say I appreciate all the hard work that this district does, um, uh, from the ground up. I appreciate the work that this board does. And, um, you know, things just don't happen if, 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 it, it takes a lot of hard work. And a lot of that work is never seen, you know, behind the scenes, but we know that there's a lot of hard work. So I appreciate that. Again, for our students tonight, we congratulate them. So with that said, do we have a motion, a second, that we adjourn?
Motion.
Ms. Carlton makes that motion, Ms. Dunale seconds it, all in favor to adjourn, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? This meeting is over. Thank you for coming.